Hello, everyone. The Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board. Aloha, everyone. The Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Number 26 is called to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I know that people have called or inquired about being virtual, and it is virtual, so you may see other people coming on screen soon. Okay, so thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Happy New Year. Thank you for joining us. We're gonna start on item number two, our first responder, monthly reports. Can I call up the Police Department, please?
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Scott Viera from the Wahihua Police Station. I'm the Night Watch Commander. Start work at 6 o'clock to 7:00 in the morning. I'll go ahead and read the stats for this month for the Wahihua Board. So for the past month, this covers January 22nd to February 22nd of this year. There were eight assaults. There were no robberies. There were five burglaries, five unauthorized entries into motor vehicles or thefts from within the vehicle. There were 56 motor vehicle collisions. Excuse me, and the total calls for service was 1,270. I'll go ahead with the tip for the month. I just wanted to talk really quick about preventing mail theft. Tax season is rolling around. A lot of us are gonna be receiving important documents or sending them off for our taxes. So firstly, just check your mail daily. Most of us kind of have an idea what time our mailman or mail person delivers the mail. Just make sure you kind of check it on a regular basis. Locky mailboxes or P.O. boxes are a good idea. If you're always, if you're a business owner or do stuff from home, you're always getting important documents. That might be a good option. USPS.com has a free app. You can actually, I think it's called Informed Delivery. You can kind of tell what's coming. If you have something coming that you want to get, make sure you go ahead and get that. Mail left in the mailbox overnight and stuff, you know, I mean, I don't know if you guys heard, but there are people out there that actually target mail. They give it to their friends and then just wreak havoc on your personal data or bank accounts. And, you know, once you're an unfortunate victim of that, it takes months, sometimes years, to actually recover. That's all I got. Any questions?
Questions from the board for HPD. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, this is minor, but they're across the street from where I live, and a couple of my neighbors have also brought this up. There's a house that has roosters that crow all night long. Is that, is that something that 911 would be stupid to call, or?
No, it's not stupid. We get calls like that frequently. So I think you're allowed to have two, I don't want to misquote anything, but I think you're allowed to have two chickens personally for your, you know, if there's more than that, if the noisy thing is unreasonable, give us a call. We'll check it out. A citation could be issued if it's in violation. But we do get calls about roosters. If it's the ferret type around, it's a little harder to, because there's a lot of them that are just, you know, walking around the street, a little harder to enforce.
No, these are, they belong to the house across the street from me, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions virtually for HPD? TJ, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
You're good.
Sorry.
Thank you, Lieutenant Viera. Just wanted to give a big mahalo out to your staff. My brother was unfortunately in a bicycling accident in the middle of the day, and you guys were fabulous providing quick service, and I just wanted to say thank you. It was, I couldn't get to him, believe it or not. I couldn't get to him as quickly as you guys did, so I just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate all the work that you guys do in our community.
Thank you, TJ. Hope he's doing okay.
He is. Thank you. Just a few speeches.
Wow.
Oh, that's good. Okay, thank you, TJ. Questions from the community for HPD? Okay, hearing none. Can I just go back on, you had mentioned that there are 56 motor vehicle accidents with the last, in one month?
Yes.
Okay, can I just ask, or could you define what kind of accident? Was it just minor fender benders or any seriously bad accidents?
So the 56 include all of them, minor to the worst, you know? We don't break them up. It just gets inputted into our CAD system like that. I apologize for that. But 56 was total, anything from like a minor fender bender to...
Is that about the average amount in one month's period?
Um, actually, it's a little lower, actually.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it fluctuates, of course, but I don't think that's out of the ordinary.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, then. We're good. Anybody else with any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. And I don't see HFD here yet, so we're gonna move on, and then we can call them back up when they get here. Okay, so I'm gonna call up on Section 3. We're gonna get to our military. If we have a representative from Congressman Jill Takuta's office? Okay, Nicole's not here now, but if she does come back on, we'll call her back up. Then I'm gonna move on to our Army Representative, Captain Pike.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Lexi Cox. I'm actually taking over for Captain Adam Pike, if you've previously seen him, so I'll be the new representative for this board specifically. So some notes. February Job Fair, the U.S. Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next fair on April 22nd at Aliamanu Military Reservation Gym, and it's gonna start at 8:30 in the morning, and it's gonna end at 2:00 P.M. This is open to the public, and walk-ins are always welcome. There are opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food services, and there's many more. The Child Need Services, or CYS, will also have openings to consider that bring also a variety of benefits, like retirement, access to all recreational facilities, discounted childcare training, and even commissary and PX privileges. For the Training Advisory on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training from today until the 28th, so the rest of this week, including late evening and early morning hours. And then finally, the National Veterans Day Parade. To all of those who served in Vietnam, we really thank you for your sacrifice and service. The National Vietnam Veterans Day Parade is gonna take place on Saturday, March 29th, to pay tribute. The opening ceremony is gonna begin at 4:30 P.M. at Fort De Rosse, and the parade will begin at 6:00 P.M. along King Kalakau. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, Avenue, and it's in Waikiki. And I also have some answers to questions that were asked from the previous board. So one board member mentioned concrete barriers at Wahihua Middle School. So they belong to U.S. Army Garrison Hawaii, the Department of Public Works. So they are placed there to prevent illegal access and trespassing on government property. So DPW spends a lot of money and a lot of hours trying to fix the fences over there, so we ask for the community to help us prevent trespassing in the future. Another board member asked about the East Range properties with the firework activity following the new years. My source was having a little bit of difficulty finding exactly what place, so they were asking to see if we had an address so that they could have more research, because it's important to us that we take care of Ohana and, you know, the military both. And then the last question was about landfill participation and Army Representatives going to the public hearings about this. So the U.S. Army Garrison is not gonna send a rep to the public meetings, because it's not in our purview. The location of the landfill is overseen by the city and the county of Honolulu, so at this point in time, the city has not come to the Army in Hawaii specifically about this topic. However, Endo Paycom at Camp Smith would be the appropriate military office to begin this discussion, and we can submit an official request that way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members? Any questions from virtually? Any questions from the community? Okay, oh, go ahead, Joe.
What was the contact for, that you just read off, regarding the landfill?
Yes, so it's the Endo Paycom Camp Smith. Their military office there, they're gonna be the best ones to contact.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yep, go ahead. Hi, good evening. Any, might be really left field, but just was wondering if the Army has been tasked to do any migrant raids? Is that become, I mean, it's a concern for our community. Has that been an order that has been given to the Garrison?
I haven't honestly heard anything about that on my end, but I can definitely get an answer back to you.
Okay, so I do have two questions that came in from the public prior to. So one was if there's, we used to get a schedule of when there would be multiple or throughout the day, multiple helicopters flying all over. So the neighbor had said that in the past two to three weeks, it's been constant helicopters flying back and forth, so wondering if there was some special, was it practice? Or was there some special event or activity going on? Because it was about three weeks long. It wasn't just one or two days, yeah?
So we had a training division-wide called Jungle Medicine Training. It was at the very beginning, or very beginning of February, which was, it was a lot of medical airlift practice. Other than that, we also started our Expert Soldier Badge Training today, actually, so they've probably been prepping for that. But I can also, like I said, research and get further information for exactly what it was, but that's what I know.
I think more than just exactly what it was, was exactly where are they supposed to be going, because they're right over my house.
And would we be, would it be possible to return to the procedure of sending us an outline or the, you know, the schedule for any kind of air activity? We used to get that schedule, so if we could get that, starting for next month or whatnot?
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be great. Thank you. And you can send it to me, and I'll distribute to the board members.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for our Army partners? Nope. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on, any, we have, we are on item A3, which would be Navy. There we go.
Good afternoon, and aloha to the board members and the community as well. I'm Daniel Sanford from Navy Region Hawaii. First off, I want to say that the Navy Region has a weekly two-page newsletter that highlights Navy stories for this past week. I brought some in here, physical copies too, but we also emailed it ahead of time as well. And this week's edition discusses the Hawaiian National Guard's completion of Exercise Sentry Aloha 25-1, which is a large-scale exercise that focused on homeland defense. Second thing, La Lima Navy. In October 2024, the Navy in Hawaii launched La Lima Navy to celebrate the Navy's 250th birthday this year. And since that has began, we have been engaging, and our goal is to achieve 250 acts of voluntary community service performed by our sailors and civilians. And I'm happy to say that we just surpassed 100 acts over this weekend here, and we'll keep working towards our goal and hopefully eclipse that. We have two opportunities here for ship tours in Navy Region here in the next several months. We are scheduling tours on active guided missile destroyers, ships in our harbor in, at least once every Saturday from approximately 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. So if the board or community civic groups or perhaps school groups would like to come out and take a look at these ships and meet our sailors, we would be very open to that. If you'd just go through the board, if there's any, if you'd like to make a reservation, we're happy to talk that through. You're also more than welcome to contact me as well. And secondly, we have a community whiteboard tours, which are rescheduled monthly to visit USS Arizona and do a tour of Pearl Harbor. Please let us know if you have a group that would be interested for that as well. They leave late afternoon from the Pacific Fleet Boathouse, which is just past the Arizona Memorial Visitor Center. And lastly, we have hiring fairs scheduled coming soon. I don't have dates for you right now, but I ask that if you are interested in that to follow our LinkedIn and Facebook pages, as we will be promoting these as they become available. All right, that's it for myself. I'm ready to take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Any questions from the board for the Navy? Any questions from the community for the Navy? Any question, virtually? Hi, TJ, go ahead.
Actually, I just wanted, by the way, thank you for your report. Sorry I'm not there. But may we get your contact information again regarding the volunteer opportunities?
Absolutely, absolutely. I tell you what, let me give you my email address, but I encourage you to contact Jeannie too, just in case you can't get ahold of me. My email is daniel, D-A-N-I-E-L dot F as in Foxtrot, dot Sanford, S-A-N-F-O-R-D, dot civ, which is C-I-V, at us.navy.mil. I know that's a mouthful, but I can't do much about that.
Thank you. No problem. I got it all. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, TJ. Okay, thank you, Daniel. We'll come back if anything. Thank you. Moving on to our government agencies, we have the Board of Water Supply coming up. Nicole?
Aloha, Chair, Board, residents, and guests. Nikki with Board of Water Supply. For our main breaks, there was one water main break in the Wahihua Whitmore Village area in January. On January 12th, a six-inch cast iron water main broke at 37 Ho'ole Ave. In our announcements, we have, our first one is our Home Water Audit. We have our Water Wisdom Program that offers tools to help customers conserve water and detect leaks. Through this program, you can learn how to perform a home water audit to ensure fixtures and appliances meet low-flush standards and identify leaks that waste water. You can pick up free water audit bags at our Public Service Building at 630 South Britannia, or I've brought some along tonight, so please help yourselves. For more information on that and to watch a short video on conducting the audit, you can go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/WaterWisdom. And just a quick FYI on that. Inside the pack are leak detection tablets, a bag that helps you determine your flow rate, and then this booklet that has all kinds of nifty information and tools, including the audit guide on the last page. Our second announcement is for our Water Waste Hotline. So if you see any water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunctioning sprinkler, excessive watering, running faucets, or anything like that, please, please, please let us know so we can follow up and stop the water loss. You can report by visiting our website at www.BoardOfWaterSupply.com/WaterWaste. You can email us at contactus@HBWS.org, or you can call 808-748-5041. And I know I always push the app, but you can always use the Honolulu 311 app to report any issues with us or any city agencies. So let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious and limited vies. Ola ikavae, water is life. So I'm happy to take any questions and/or concerns.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Any questions virtually for Board of Water Supply? Seeing and hearing none? Thank you. Okay, moving on to our State Department of Transportation, Fon? Yeah. Okay, so while we are just, we're looking efficient here, because we're just moving along. We're just moving along without a paddle, actually, but we're moving along. Okay, so we are, we are on item four, Residents Concerns and Community Announcements. So this is a time when anyone has an announcement to make. You can start walking up to the microphone and make your announcement. If you have a community announcement or something that's relatable to Wahihua Whitmore area, that's something that we need to know about, if there's a meeting coming up or some kind of activity. But before you do that, I do have one official announcement that I want to read off to you, and this is from Lelehuah High School and the Department of Transportation Services from the city and county of Honolulu. And it says, "The subject is regarding the Lelehuah Eastern Leg and Lelehuah Roads. This is to inform your board that the intersection of Lelehuah, the Eastern Leg, and Lelehuah Roads will be converted to a stop-control intersection to improve traffic safety in the area. We will be issuing a work order, reference legal paint and sign work order, item LPSWO35731, for your information, to the Department of Facility Maintenance, DFM, at the city to install appropriate signage and roadway markings on Lelehuah Eastern Leg and Lelehuah Roads. We have attached a plan for your reference. For updates regarding the completion of this project, please contact the DFM, you know, and they have their number there. So if you have any questions, it doesn't have a date when they're gonna start this, but I'll do a follow-up call tomorrow. But if anybody has any questions, just let me know, and I'll include your questions in our, when I call them. So again, just FYI, they will be doing work in the area by Lelehuah High School, Lelehuah Road and Lelehuah High School. Okay, any announcements for the public announcements to be made?
Cherry Shikawa.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, I just had a question to what you just announced. You said Lelehuah Road and...
Lelehuah Eastern Leg.
And I'm sorry, where is that?
I'm not sure. It just says, "At the intersection of Lelehuah, and then in parance, it's Eastern Leg and Lelehuah Road, will be converted to a stop-control intersection to improve traffic safety in the area." But I can call tomorrow and find, follow up, and I can send you guys an email when I get that more clarification.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that is, and I'm wondering if that's where Lelehuah Road meets California Avenue?
Well, that's what I was thinking, but it...
I don't know where the Lelehuah East Leg is or whatever it said. Maybe Sylvia knows.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got clarification for you. Lelehuah Leg is the east, I mean, eastern is the back of Lelehuah High School. It's the back of Lelehuah High School. That's what they describe it as? That's the name for that area? Right, when you go in the back, right? Yeah.
And what are they gonna, what are they gonna do?
They're gonna make it so it's safe, because it says the safety issue. The Lelehuah Road and the leg goes in the back.
This is Lelehuah Road.
Yeah.
So Lelehuah Road is off of California Avenue.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so the school is down here.
But it goes, you know, it looks around. Yeah, it's behind.
Cherry Shikawa, would you mind?
I'm gonna ask for...
Yeah, getting clarification.
Yeah, I'm gonna be calling them tomorrow, and I'll find out. We just got this today, so they, yeah, that's all it is, yeah. So I'll call them tomorrow, and then when I get more information, then I can send that to the board.
Yeah, because I'm not sure that there's a big tie-up of traffic in the back, like where you folks are describing, behind Lelehuah Road and Lelehuah High School, I think.
Well, the only thing I think is, like, when I've gone to the games, I mean, it's really, well, it's always been over all this time, but it's really crowded to get out of there, so that might be the safety, the traffic issue. Because it does say that they're doing this because of traffic safety. But again, I'll give them a call tomorrow. I'll call both Lelehuah and as well as DFM to find out for clarification.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll let you guys know. Thank you. Any other questions? Just to clarify again, I will be following up on this, and I will be giving both Lelehuah High School as well as the Department of Facility Maintenance be asking them for clarification, and I'll forward that information to board members. Thank you. Okay, any other presenting announcements? Go ahead.
Greetings, members of the board, Wahihua community. My name is Frank Roach. I'm here on behalf of the Wahihua Pineapple Festival. This year will take place on Saturday, April 5th. It will kick off at 7:00 a.m. with the Pineapple Runs at 10K that's held annually. And then after that, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 P.M., there will be the Pineapple Festival at Kala Elementary School at 130 California Avenue.
So is there, what is the route gonna be for that one? Because I know before they would, like, meet up or park by the Doe Plantation side, and then, I mean, over the years, they've done different kind of routing or parking situation.
So the route is the same as the one last year. It's gonna start at Kala Elementary School. I'm sorry if I'm butchering that. Cam Highway, and then to where it meets with the interstate, and it's gonna go along that side road. Again, I'm not familiar with the names of the roads. I'm a little new here. And then it's gonna go there by Schofield, and then through, can't see what street that is, but eventually it's gonna come back down Cam Highway, across the bridge, and then finish at the school again.
Cam Highway.
Yeah, but not, not...
Then you go by Wilaquina and then back onto Cam Highway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The route can be found at PineappleRunHawaii.com.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 P.M. and what is the date on that one?
Saturday, April 5th, and the 10K starts at 7:00. It starts at 7:00, but we'll be handing out packets and getting everybody lined up and getting everybody ready to go before that.
And we'll ask you probably, this is April, so if you don't mind, I'm just asking a few quick questions
Okay.
on behalf of our community.
Yep.
So where will we, where will people be parking? Will you be running shuttles to drop people off from their vehicles? Or if you're going from Kala, because that's a very residential area? What's the crowd expectancy for you?
The crowd expectancy is anywhere from about 700 to 1,000. We are encouraging carpooling. We'll have military will be able to park on base. We'll be shuttling them there. And then from their parking, last year, we used the elementary school. And this year, we still have the elementary school listed as parking locations.
Okay. And then have you made contact with the city's Department of Transportation?
Yes, we're working with them.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Because they usually will ask us for a letter of recommendation?
Yes.
So we'll follow up for the March meeting. We'll probably have to put that on our agenda.
Okay.
So if you can let me know how you guys are proceeding on that, and then we can move forward.
Okay, yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for this upcoming event taking place on April 5th? Go ahead, Joe.
I just wanted to comment that after the, after the Pineapple Run, there is the Pineapple Festival in the park right behind Kala Elementary.
Correct.
That's not, you're with the CPO?
Yes, I'm with the CPO from the camps.
Okay, so it's not put on by them. It's being put on by the community?
Yeah, and that's a fundraiser, the second part of it. Yeah, that's correct. Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
In regards to that, in case people don't know, there are great things to buy there. There's all kinds of food items. There's, you know, small gift items. It's really a good thing.
Any other questions for the community for this, for this upcoming event? Virtually, any, TJ, go ahead.
Sorry, I had another question, not regarding this event. Sorry. Call them, I...
Okay, no problem. All right. Thank you very much. If you don't mind leaving your name and number, if you can give us your, you can, you don't have to send the mic, but before you leave, if you, or if you write down a note and give it to me.
Okay, thanks. I'll leave fires on the table.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other announcements at this time? Okay, all right. We're gonna be moving on to our presentation section.
Sorry, Cherry Shikawa.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm speaking as a resident, and I just wanted to ask if anyone else, I don't know, let's say in the last three months, if anyone else has experienced an accident or if they've fallen on the sidewalks from Kimo Farm along Wilaquina Drive out to the intersection of Cunia Road and Wilaquina Drive, if they've been in an accident or something along those lines, along that stretch of highway, if they could please reach out to me? Because I'm pretty sure, anyway, if there is anyone out there that's experienced some problems or issues, whether you're riding a bicycle or walking or a skateboard or something of that nature, if you've been in an accident, again, from Kimo Farms near Schofield Barracks out toward the intersection of Wilaquina Drive and Cunia Road, if you could please reach out to me and share your information with me?
Okay. TJ, you mentioned in the last three or four months, is that?
Yeah, even, yeah, even as far back as six months. Yeah, so unfortunately, my brother was in a, was in an accident there a few days ago, and... Yeah, so unfortunately, my brother was in a, isn't, was in an accident, uh, there a few days ago and, um, I'd like to know if there were any others because he ended up, um, needing paramedic assistance and having a CAT scan, uh, had a minor concussion and some stitches. And it's a very gruesome picture to, um, have, so I didn't share with anybody. But when I went to look at the area where he had fallen, it does look like, um, it is an area that is a sidewalk, but, uh, the asphalt that was put down there, like maybe to fill in a pothole was not temp down good. And so, uh, it was loose. And he hit it and he fell luckily onto the grassy sidewalk area and not the roadway which is Wilakina Drive. So I'm really going to push for, I mean, now we've always, as a board and as a community, we've always asked for safer sidewalks. Um, Waewawa is and can be a fabulous walkable community. And so I guess my brother's accident is just, um, pushing me to find out more information, gather more data, more accident information about that area in particular, especially because it is so widely used, not only by, uh, community members and guests from outside of town, but also, uh, our military communities are there. And I know that the military has really encouraged their families to walk and ride bicycles and stuff. So if there's anyone else, like I said, that has been injured along that stretch of highway, I would really like to talk story with them.
Okay, if we get, if I get any, uh, messages from anyone, I'll forward that to you regarding this situation.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, T J. Okay, any other announcements? Oh, yes, please come up.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Delilah Samso and I am in scouting troop seven nine seven out on Hickam. And I am working on my eagle, um, I like my proposal. Um, so my proposal is to put up free little libraries here and, um, around Oahu, Waewawa. Um, and I will coordinate all the volunteers that I need to help build stock and install the libraries around Waewawa. And my first idea was to put up the libraries around city bus stops for people to use as they're waiting. And the second option is to ask the Waewawa community to, um, see if they can host the libraries in their yards, like in their, um, in their yards. And I'm here to ask like what permits, um, I would need and like what print permits would be required to do this project.
Okay, can you, Joe, wait, hold on. Could you repeat your name again, please?
Delilah Samso.
Delilah, okay. And then from your, this is your, your, um, eagle project, right? And is this something that, because you're in the Hickam troop, is that correct? But you're doing it in Waewawa?
Yes.
Can I ask you how come?
Um, so I used to live in Waewawa. Waewawa is my community. I go to Lelehua High School.
Okay.
Um, so Waewawa is my community, so I wanna give back.
Okay, I love that. Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, if you're, if you're looking to put out this, I guess it's just a box, right?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, um, on private property, then you don't need a permit, you just need permission.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, this is kind of like a newspaper stand, you know, you see them on the sidewalks everywhere. Uh, you, you do need a, a permit for that, but you need to contact the city. But, um, you know, we have a library in town, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is a lending? You expect people to borrow and bring back or it's giveaway?
Um, kind of all, it's just a thing where people can take books and then leave books. Um, so they're free little libraries, so anybody can come up and then take a book and then they can return it or they can drop off a new one.
Contact me out. I'd be glad to have you guys set up in front of my house.
Thank you.
That's great, cause, cause Joe works at the Waewawa, oh, he, he, not works, but he's with the, he's with, he's with the library.
President of the Friends of Waewawa Library.
He would be happy to help you. And so I just want to ask you though, so where are you gonna be collecting these books from? And who's responsible for like, if, you know, if it's not there the next day, like how does that work?
So.
Or if they're throwing all, all around somebody's yard or something?
So, um, I would be going around to different schools and different places here on Oahu and asking for book donations, um, to help stock the libraries itself. And I would go out, um, every few, couple of months to check on the libraries and see like if they need to be restocked or if they need to be cleaned or anything like that.
You know that our public library is gonna be closing in a few months?
Yes.
Uh, we're currently putting books aside to be removed or destroyed or, or stored. Uh, you can talk to Andrea Wade, the librarian. You stop in there and ask her and I'll, I'll talk to her as well. Uh, see if she can just give you some books.
Thank you.
Okay, my last question, because I, this is kind of, I just find it interesting. But so how do you get, um, is it, uh, when you do this project for your eagle project, how do you get graded on it or pointed by how many people borrow the books or how many visits you make? How does that work?
One of the actual, so how it works is that it's an actual requirement that I have to do in order to progress in my scouting, um, thing. And one of them is that I can do anything as long as it doesn't benefit scouting. So I'm just doing this, um, because Waewawa is my community. I wanna give back. I've been here for five years now and I just wanna give back and, yeah.
So do you think that project will help the community, like, cause you're gonna set up three, right? So you have to pick three locations? And how do you, how will you gauge that it's helping someone? Do you, do, do the books get, you know, you check it out and like, how would you know who's, if somebody's borrowing it and?
Um, I would put up a little checklist inside the library. And be like, say like what the book that they checked out was and like what, and like what day they checked it out? And if they returned it, what day they would return it?
Okay, all right. Board members, any other questions? I think I asked enough. Any other questions? Any questions in the community? Oh, go ahead.
So if people wanna make donations, how, where do they call?
Um, so one of the big donation areas that I wanna do it at is mainly schools because I know that some, um, schools, they tend to like get, like start to like get rid of books that they don't need in their libraries or kids that are in the military and they P C S, they can get rid of books that, um, they can't bring with them. Um, so once I actually figure out once what schools I'm gonna put them on, um, I can let you guys know. And then if you guys would like to donate, then you can go to those spots.
Okay, any other questions, community or virtually? Okay, so Delilah, I'm just gonna give you one more suggestion, if you don't mind, cause now you mentioned going to schools.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna look at Kevin for a little bit because if you're going, just to find out, maybe you can touch base to just help. If she does need a permit to put it up next to a bus stop, you probably would need a permit, like one of those kiosk kind of thing. But if you're going on someone's private property, you'll have to at least, I'm gonna suggest write a letter or leave it on the, mailing it to that family or if you meet that family. But, um, I would suggest not just leaving a box there with, you know, so I think, but at least regarding a permit, but if you're going on to city property, like buy a seat, putting it next to a kiosk, next to the bus shelter. I think that when you need to have some kind of, yeah, that'd be great. Oh, great, see, we all work together, this is great. And then if you're going to the school, you just mentioned going, working on a school campus and that would be on the state side. Um, and our state representative isn't here today, but I can talk to Fawn and she can let you know how that would work out if you were, would be allowed to go on a, on a school property to put up a library or not. Cause we want you to succeed. So if we can help you in any way, we'll, we'll keep in contact with your mom too or something like that. Okay, very good. Good job.
Thank you.
You did well, yay. Let's give her a hand. Good job. Okay, all right, so now we're in, uh, section five of our, our agenda. We're moving along very well. Um, so two things are going on this. We just, we are, we did ask and we are grateful to have, uh, the Board of Water Supply, you know, Ernest Lalas here, the manager in chief, uh, engineer from Board of Water Supply. And we also have Roger Babcock, who is the Director of Department of Environmental Services at the city. Um, because we have a small crowd today, um, if you wanted to, I was just gonna ask if you both wanna, did you wanna pull up a chair to, to be by the microphone or you rather stand? It's up to you. Um, we can, you know, whichever is more convenient or com- comfortable for you cause I don't know if we'll have as many questions as we have. We do see a lot of people, but not as much as in the past. So I'm gonna open it up, um, to give you both some flexibility. If you'd rather stand and, and do your presentation, if you wanna sit, you know, and Roger, you can go after Ernie. So Ernie can, you know, Ernie can go first and Roger can follow you. If you're comfortable with that, and if you wanna just bring your chairs up there and we'll give you one of our mic, uh, our microphones and you can sit if you want or?
Uh, yeah, this is, this works for me. Uh, maybe it might be best because this is about a proposed landfill.
Yeah, okay.
To have actually, uh, Roger go first. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, we're good then. We can switch it off. Very good. Thank you. Again, that's how we work together.
Yeah, okay, so good evening, Cherry Shikawa, board members. Members of the public, my name is Roger Babcock. I'm Director of Department of Environmental Services. We take care of wastewater and solid waste for the city. On the solid waste side, we collect from all, uh, single family, multi, and single family residents. Uh, some multifamily, but most multifamily and all commercial, federal, state, et cetera, is privately collected. However, once it's collected, it does all come to the city. So we handle all solid waste for everybody that lives on the island and everybody that visits the island. It all comes to the city, so we take care of everything. Um, so I, you know, don't necessarily have a, a formal presentation, happy to answer questions, but I just will outline kind of, um, where we are and how we got here. Um, Waimea Nualgauch Sanitary Landfill is the only municipal solid waste landfill on the island. Um, it has been in operation since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, there have been, uh, studies to identify a next landfill. Um, beginning in the early two thousands, there were special blue ribbon panels and committees formed. Ultimately, uh, a new landfill site has, has never been chosen up until recently. And it was, uh, extended, um, expanded and, and its life extended several times. Most recently, the big, the big expansion was in, uh, two thousand and ten. The original landfill site was about a hundred acres. The current site is about two hundred acres, basically doubled in size in two thousand and ten. The landfill, uh, has to have permits to operate. And, um, because it's on agriculture zone land, it has to have a state permit from the Land Use Commission, which is called a special use permit, an S U P. The most recent one of those was issued in twenty nineteen. It was an extension because the landfill still has capacity. And, but it still needs a permit to, uh, to continue operations. So in twenty nineteen, the permit was extended to twenty twenty-eight. So for, uh, nine years extension. Um, the permit specifies that the landfill needs to be closed and no more waste deposited there in twenty twenty-eight by twenty twenty-eight. It also specified that a new landfill needed to be identified by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. So the city had gone through a process to identify a new landfill. Um, again, beginning in, um, when the new administration came in, in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one, sorry. Um, but that process was, um, ran. And, and that group, the, uh, landfill advisory committee that had been formed by the mayor, uh, recommended none of the sites be chosen. And we recommended that the city pursue, request an extension of the deadline to identify the new site of two years until December of twenty twenty-four. And to evaluate previously unevaluated sites. Specifically sites outside of the no pass zone and sites on military land and sites that could be, um, obtained by, say, eminent domain, by purchasing properties and things like that. So we did do that and, um, then, uh, over the next, and the ensuing two years. And then on December tenth, we had a press conference and we announced the chosen site, which was one of the original six sites evaluated by the advisory committee. Um, to, as, as the site of potential site of the next landfill. Meeting our requirement of, from our, if it's in our permit. So that's kind of how we got to, got, got to where we are. Um, the next steps, there's several next steps to actually building and opening a landfill. Need permits, um, the environmental impact study, uh, need, which includes community outreach, uh, et cetera. The, um, in, in addition, I would say that the, um, there have been, um, several, uh, well, first, before I say that, I'll just mention that administration laid out a three-step plan for the next landfill. Plan A was, is the site was identified northwest of Waewawa. If that is not possible, Plan B is to seek modification of existing law, specifically Act seventy-three, which has restrictions, restricts all conservation lands and requires a half mile, bu- half mile buffer around any landfill between the edge of the landfill property and the edge of any residential property, school property or hospital property. That's part of Act seventy-three, which passed in twenty nineteen. So step, Plan B is to ask the legislature to reduce the buffer zone and eliminate the conservation zone in order to make sites available outside of the no pass zone. So that evaluation only looked at sites outside the no pass zone. So Plan B excludes all the sites, including the Waewawa site that have been evaluated previously. If that doesn't work, we identified Plan C, which is to go back to the Land Use Commission and tell them that we have no options other than to stay at the Waimea Nualgauch landfill, expand it and extend our permit to, to use that as the landfill into the future. So I would mention things that have happened since then. We have a new legislative session and there have been a lot of bills in the ledge that are still alive today. Um, there are four senate bills and three house bills still, you know, in progress that would each ban the landfills, uh, in, for example, the one that we've identified. Um, and also to, uh, there's one bill to expand the Act seventy-three buffer as opposed to contracting it. Um, so that would have a certain effect as well. Actually, if that law passes, it's not possible to expand Waimea Nualgauch landfill. So that would eliminate Plans A, Plan B and Plan C. So we're, that's where we're at right now. We're in the legislative process. Um, it is likely that some bill is going to pass, uh, with respect to landfills. So I think I'll stop there and let maybe Ernie talk and then we can ask questions or I can answer questions anytime.
Uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, Rachel, if you could bring up the PowerPoint presentation. I'll try to go through the slides. Uh, there are copies of the handouts on the table here. So if you didn't get one, please raise your hand and Nicole can help you get a copy. Uh, but, um, thank you. Uh, so if you could put it into view mode, full, full screen mode, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Ernie Lal, the Manager-in-Chief Engineer for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. With me tonight is also Kathleen Elliott-Pahinui from the North Shore. She's our Information Officer, Head of our Communications Office. So if anybody has any questions and need follow-up information, please see Kathleen before the end of the meeting. And thank you, Nicole, for doing a great job on the monthly report. Okay, thank you. Next slide, Kavaiola, Water for Life, that's our vision. Next slide, please. So this is a, just a kind of a graphic showing what it takes to provide water to about a million people every day on this island of Oahu. It takes, we have to be able to produce, on average, about 145 million gallons every single day to meet the needs of this 1 million people. All of our water, our drinking water, comes from underground sources, what we call the water that's in the volcanic rock below us, in what we call aquifers. So that's taken out through tunnels, shafts, wells, almost 200 wells around the island. And it's conveyed to our customers through a lot of infrastructure, water tanks, 2,100 miles of pipeline, to about 170,000-plus customers. Next, please. So now, the, the request for a new landfill for Oahu. Next, please. So, yeah, Roger did mention about landfill advisory committee. This is back in about 2022. The E&amp;B convened an advisory committee to advise them on potentials, potential sites for a new city landfill. We were, presented six sites at the time, and all of those sites ended up being right over drinking water quality freshwater aquifers. So at the time, I disapproved all six sites. And keep in mind, this is also the time when, shortly after Thanksgiving, that, that weekend, that Sunday after Thanksgiving, almost 93,000 people at Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam were exposed to fuel-contaminated drinking water coming out of their faucets in their homes. So this is a time when Red Hill really came out, and I think, I think shocked our island, that our precious drinking water that we all rely upon for, for our lives could be contaminated in such a fashion. So the, I think, one thing that came out of that incident was the importance of our freshwater resources, because we live on an island. We, we can't go to another state to get fresh water. We have to take care, Malama, what we have, and that's our source of drinking water right now for almost a billion people every day. So we, we disapproved all six sites. Next, please. So later on, this is actually my response letter. Next slide, please. So in 2024, on December 10th, the mayor and Roger announced a new site, a proposed site, a little to the west or north of here in the Halemano area. And then, and I, when I was at the press conference, I looked at that site, and I was thinking, did I review that site before? Later on, I learned that, actually, that was one of the six sites that we had reviewed, six, two years earlier, and we'd already disapproved. So I just sent the letter on December 17th, basically reaffirming the disapproval of this site, which happened to be one of those six sites that we'd already looked at. And the primary reason, it's location above our freshwater aquifer. Next, please. So some key points of concern to remember, Oahu is 100% dependent on its groundwater aquifer for drinking water. Landfills contain contaminants that can enter the groundwater if the, if those contaminants leak out of the containment systems of the landfill. Landfills, once constructed, they're basically permanent facilities. They'll be there forever. Preservation and protection of our precious and pure groundwater resources are essential to ensure water security, security for our future for generations to come. Next, please. This is just simple, us, manic about where our freshwater comes from. Basically, it all originates as evaporation from the Pacific Ocean around us. Clouds are created as the clouds move over our mountains, primarily the Koalau and Wainai Mountains, they drop rain on the island. Then rain seeps down through the porous volcanic rock that, that is our island. And because freshwater is lighter in density than saltwater, it can float on the saltwater that also seeps below our island through that precious, that porous volcanic rock. We are fortunate, along the fringes of the coastal areas, there is something called caprock, shown here in yellow, marine sediments and deposits, with changes in sea level over time, erosion of the mountains, ending up in the coastal areas. So less permil, less porous, actually provides a barrier to hold the freshwater in from flowing out to the ocean, ocean. Next, please. So this is just a description of the, the aquifer, aquifer units around the island, as determined by the Commission on Water Resource Management, State of Hawaii. It provides an idea of the sustainable yield. We are blessed with a large capacity, freshwater capacity in these underground aquifers. Next, please. So we did a little research, and this is just some of the preliminary, preliminary information, studies done by the EPA, the USGS, or the United States Geological Survey. Basically, all landfills eventually leak into the environment. Remember, they're there forever. So the question that comes up to my mind is, will these containment systems last basically forever? Also, the, the lecheate, which is basically rainwater that percolates or seeps through the landfill, through all that opala, on its journey, seeping through the opala, it picks up a lot of contamination, a lot of contaminants that are very bad for the environment, bad for our water resources. And even the best-designed systems will fail at some point, unless they're replaced, or the waste is removed. Waimea Nalo Gooch is an example, generates between 3.6, at least the two numbers I saw was 3, 3.6 to 5 million gallons a year of this contaminated water, contaminated lecheate. It's really a function of how much rain falls over the landfill and seeps down through the landfill. So remember, Waimea Nalo Gooch is in a dry part. I grew up in Waipahu. That area is drier, much drier than the Halemano area here. When we look at rainfall data, we saw that the, the site at Waimea Nalo would, gets about half the rainfall that would fall in this Halemano site. So it'd be, the amount of lecheate is kinda directly proportional to the volume, amount of rainfall over the area. So it could potentially, I'm not saying it's a guarantee, but potentially, you could see maybe double the volume of lecheate generated on an annual basis. Next, please. So this is just some information we, we've taken from E&amp;B's data, from their reports. The analytes are different contaminants, or chemicals, or metals. And the Waimea Nalo Gooch, that second column is, was some of the numbers that was the results of what was in that lecheate. And also, on the two right columns are what's in our, some of our Board of Water Supply wells. So if you compare the right side, which is our BWS wells in Honolulu and in Honolulu, it has nowhere the amount of contaminants in the lecheate in Waimea Nalo Gooch. Next, please. And this is just additional information of different chemicals, including lead and mercury here. Next, please. Additional information. Next, next slide, please. So this is actually looking at PFAS. Remember that, the concern, that's a growing concern for, for the community and across the United States and the globe, is something called PFAS, per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, substances, man-made chemicals created back in the early 40s, late 30s, that was something that could, basically, you would have great difficulty breaking down in the environment. So they call these, they gave it a nickname of the forever chemicals. So these fluorinated compounds are very difficult to, to degrade in the natural environment. So they tend to last there a long time. And some of these are very water soluble, so they move with the water in the underground aquifer, and can get into our wells. We've already had some detections in some of our wells, in the Kuniua Waipahu, Waipio area, Pearl City area, and so even as far eastward as Waiala and Mona Loa wells. Next, please. So this is just a summary of the literature, different studies done on two of the types of PFASs that are just recently regulated by the US EPA. So in about three years, if we have these levels, higher than these levels, or at four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS, we won't be able to serve that to our customers. So the four parts per trillion are what they call drinking water standards. I'll just say that one part per trillion is the equivalent of one second in 31,000 years. So you think about it, these are extremely low levels, yet the EPA has regulated them because of concerns on impacts to human health. Next, please. So this is done by the Department of Health. Actually, it was an analysis of lecheate and ash samples taken from Waimea Nalo Gooch. And, and this was actually done and published in a report from November of last year. So this is some of the PFAS levels and types that was detected in that lecheate and ash. So you can see, we don't want this, this material leaking out into the environment, contaminating the, the land, and also the water, our freshwater resources. So putting a landfill over a freshwater aquifer, from our perspective, is not a good idea. Next, please. So Roger mentioned no-pass zone. Next, please. Light blue is shown, our no-pass zone. It was created back in 1982. So I mahalo my predecessors at the Board of Water Supply. The manager at the time was Kazuhaya Shida, and also the board members who had the foresight to pass regulations or administrative rules that have the force and effect of law for the Board of Water Supply regarding waste disposal system. So the, the light blue here is areas shown that we would, areas that we would recommend strong consideration for a location of a future landfill, or landfills, especially because if you go to the interior of the island, everything in gray on the inside of the, that light blue violet color are areas where there are freshwater resources that, without the protection of a caprock. Next, please. So the landfill site is well within that area, in the gray area, so in the no-pass area. Next, please. This is information from a groundwater atlas, published by the United States Geological Survey. The arrows indicate general flow directions of water, freshwater, in the underground aquifer, water flowing in the porous volcanic rock. And you can see the Schofield area, which is the Oahu area here. The numbers represent the top of the aquifer, measured above sea level. So you can see in Oahu, there's some, some interesting under geology that is not fully understood, but the rainwater and the recharge that flows into Oahu, it's kept like, at a higher, much higher elevation than, than other parts of the island. But you can look at the arrows. The arrows are, indicate groundwater flow direction. So the proposed landfill site is kinda within the border between the Schofield area and that Waialua, Mokalea, Kavaiola area. And the arrows point toward Waialua and Haleeva. So our concerns, and we have wells that supply drinking water to our North Shore community, is that if contamination started leaking from the landfill, created underground contaminated plumes, over time, they could migrate toward the Waialua-Haleeva area. There are also streams that cross that area. So potentially, the groundwater at different sections or reaches of the stream could actually recharge the stream, and actually feed, potentially feed contaminants directly into stream flow. So, and that's, that's our, that's basically our reason why we think it's not a good idea to put a, a large landfill above a drinking water aquifer. Next, please. Our regulations are in our Administrative Rules 3-301, Section 3-301. Next, please. And basically, our approach is prevention of, of sources, of prevention or protection of sources from degradation or contamination is also the better way to go than trying to clean it up or treat for it after the fact. So protecting our water resources is our, are really our, our best approach. And when, when you think about it, think about it not only during our lifetimes, but in the generations to come. Think about your grandchildren today, and what they will have to face in the future. I just wanna say that I have a lot of respect for the mayor, for Roger, and his team at E&amp;B. It's not a difficult problem. It's a very difficult problem to deal with. We all generate opala in our daily lives. How we manage our opala, we need to look at ways that are sustainable, that doesn't trade off the quality of our freshwater resources, because ola ikavae, water is life. Mahalo.
Thank you. Sylvia, can we have the lights back on, and the fans? And then Roger, and do you guys wanna stay up there, and we'll just, you can share a mic, or June, can you share a mic with them? June? June, can you, you can share my, okay, all right, thanks. Okay, so we have, I'm sure everybody has a lot of questions, but I'm gonna go to the board first. Any board members, any questions for either Roger, or regarding, or Ernie, regarding the presentation and explanation by both gentlemen? Go ahead. Joe?
Yeah, the, everybody's been asking us about accessing military land. On your pass, no-pass drawing, it shows that Barber's Point is a preferred location, I think, for a landfill, and that's on Navy property?
Yeah, I think Barber's Point, actually, there are portions of Barber's Point that I think the Navy still retains. A bunch of land was transferred to the State of Hawaii during the BRAC, or the Base Realignment and Closure Process, I think, going back to the 1990s. There are other military lands around Pearl Harbor, Lualuale, Mokapu Peninsula, the Marine Corps Base Hawaii, in Waimea Nalo, there are military lands that they still control.
Are there discussions going on with the military, or with?
I'll ask Roger to answer that.
Yeah, sure. So there's, the military does have a lot of property on the island. The Army property is basically all in a no-pass zone. The Barber's Point area, which is no longer Navy, but was transferred, the, the problem with Barber's Point area is there are federal, federal restrictions with respect to airports on citing landfills. So a, a solid waste landfill cannot be within 10,000 feet of the edge of a property of an airport. So all of Barber's Point is excluded, because there's a, there's an airport there. The same is true with Metropolitan Honolulu. Of course, with Marine Corps Base Hawaii, there's a airport there, as well as Oahu, Oahu Airfield, and, as well as Dillingham Airfield. So those areas are all excluded by federal law.
Dr. Babcock, what's the restriction on having a landfill next, nearby an airport? Why?
Yeah, so basically, birds can take down airplanes. And so birds around most landfills are a problem, a big problem. Our landfill takes mostly ash from HPower. Our landfill takes mostly ash from H Power. And so there, there, there aren't birds there, but that doesn't matter. It's still a federal restriction. Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Given what we heard and all the reasons not to have it in the area proposed, what is, how is the mayor justifying?
Yeah, so the, let me just finish the answer of the Joe's question too, because he asked about whether discussions are ongoing with military. There are Navy lands, that other Navy lands that would meet all of the restrictions. One is Lualualei Reservation. There's a lot of land that is outside the no pass zone. It meets all the buffer requirements, et cetera. There's land at Iroquois Point, there's a lot of land. It is in use as shooting ranges and, and battery and all kinds of stuff. And then there's the Waipio Peninsula where the city soccer complex is now. So that meets all restrictions, those, those sites. And so the, the city was, was in discussions with those at high level. And they were rejected by, by, by the military, so that we were not got permission. So with respect to the, the second question, why are we proceeding, you know, the way that we are? So we identified the Plan A and Plan B and Plan C. We cannot get an extension to stay at Waimanalo Gulch unless every other possibility has been excluded. So you can't skip any steps along the way. We needed to propose a site that was legally available, didn't meet, you know, didn't violate any existing state statutes or federal laws. And then the second step was to try to modify the more recent law that came into effect, the Act 73, which put restrictions with respect to residential properties and stuff like that. If, if that was, if that buffer zone was reduced from a half mile to a quarter mile, it makes some other sites available. Those sites may or may not be great, but they are outside the no pass zone. And one of them is the HDNC quarry in Kailua, next to H3, the, the south part of that quarry. But it is an active quarry, it's not for sale. But that is a possibility. It is also its own conservation land, so there are two restrictions associated with it. Again, we go back to the Land Use Commission to seek an extension of our permit. We will have to be able to say unequivocally that we are banned from every other site and military sites and that the legislature was not willing to modify any existing laws to make any other properties available. It's the only way you can progress to some sort of a solution. I hope that answers your question.
Go ahead, June.
This, this is for Director Babcock. Did you know that when on agricultural lands, they do have certain areas where they leave out the unmarketable produce out in the field? And they put it in large piles? Or they just leave it, whatever they cannot sell? That attracts a lot of birds. And in the Helamana area, I can tell you that because I had to do a census survey just in case anybody lived there, homeless people, whatever. And I saw the agricultural piles with, I would say, hundreds and hundreds of birds, not just regular small birds, but seabirds, big ones in the Helamana area. So wouldn't that also be a danger? I don't know if anybody looked at that.
Yeah, so the, the way you, generally, birds are associated with readily available food sources. And the, so most of what goes to the landfill, about 20 trucks full of ash go to the landfill every day. Only when H Power is out of service and we can't burn trash and turn it into electricity and ash, does any waste, municipal solid waste, you know, go to the landfill.
But what I'm talking about is the agricultural byproduct of unsellable produce that's left out in the field.
Yeah.
And at times, they, they put it up in, in piles, big piles.
Yeah.
I've seen them do that. So, and I've seen hundreds of birds just feasting on that. So you, you got the birds out there already. Because unfortunately, they don't know what to do. Maybe they will, maybe the value-added center will solve that problem for them. But the problem is there. The birds are there right now.
Yeah, got it. So, yeah, so I don't, the, the birds generally though, wouldn't, wouldn't come to the landfill. It's not something that attracts birds. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you, June. Oh, Joe, I'm sorry.
Given that we're going to have to get a landfill someplace, somewhere, be given thought to multiple smaller landfills that would fit?
Yeah, so we need, there's, there's really just very few places. There's, unless Act 73 is modified, if you exclude the no pass zone, the only, the only places available are what, what I mentioned, Waipio Peninsula, Iroquois Point, Lualualei. There, there are no other sites around that fringe. There's people live all around, you know, that whole fringe. And so there's no space, you know, between people and, and a potential landfill. So it just, it just doesn't exist. You can make small places available, like some golf courses and things like that that are very small. If you, only though if you reduce buffer zone, which means it's going to be closer to people's houses or to schools or to hospitals. And so that would have to become acceptable. And there's currently no indication in legislature, they just passed Act 73 in 2019 to go back and sort of scale back on that. That, that legislation really was designed to prevent the expansion of the construction and demolition waste landfill that exists in, in Nanakuli, which is in a residential neighborhood. And so it made, prevented the prevention, prevented the expansion, the second, third, fifth expansion of that, of that facility. It, its life now is, it's permitted, it will close in, in a few years, in the next few years. So a scaling back would change the whole intent of that bill. So.
Basically, you need, you need a legislature to reduce the restricted areas that you can, that you can place a landfill.
That would make some places available.
So I have a quick question. First of all, thank you very much. I think today's discussion is a little more, it gives more clarity and a little more in depth. So thank you to both of you for being here. And thank you for everyone for being kind and, and thoughtful to each other. Nobody's screaming and yelling and we can do this in a nice and orderly and ohana-style conversation. But you know, I keep thinking about Board of Water Supply's logo, yeah, kavaiola? And how important those three words mean everything, right? It's everything because water is life, right? So I guess I'm asking then, if in general, everybody understands that kavaiola, that is it, then I think, would it be wise to just reserve that thought? And then really do have to work on the other part of it, which is to find another way, another place rather than going back to that, you know? Because it's like a no pass, we know that and I think everybody understands it and everyone wants to preserve that. So I think all of us, our efforts really just needs to be what you're saying, whether it's at the legislature or whether it's finding an alternate location. And I think we need to, I would think that it would be, we would be moving in a better direction at that point because in general, everyone understands this message of kavaiola, that we need water, that we, precious, right? So how can we together find that other option? Whether it's, whether it's at, you know, one of the military areas or whichever area, is there something that we can start to narrow down or target to look at that we can work together to get, to open some eyes, open some other options? So that, you know, we can, you can at least be moving forward to look for another landfill that we can all support, that we can look for, that would be not as negative? Is that a possibility? I mean, because I, I would hate to think that we're going to go back to the locations that has, have already been said no fly. So we, we have to find someplace else, right? But we just have to find it together in a way. So.
Yeah, so I, I, I understand the, that there's concern for the, for our precious water. And of course, I share that concern with, with everyone. And the name of the game, of course, is, you know, source water protection. And there are different ways to do, you know, source water protection. One of them is to, is to ban certain activities in the, in the conservation areas or in the, in the recharge areas of the, of the aquifers. But there are other ways. And the, so, so, and, and, and there's, there's a long list of, of prevention, you know, measures. And one of them is to, is to have multiple liner facilities with collection of leachate that's removed, which is what we do now. And that's the same thing that's done for underground fuel storage tanks at every gas station. We can't really eliminate gas stations and they have to have a place to have the fuel so we can fuel up our cars. And there are many other contaminating, potential contaminating activities. The Board of Waters Play has a source water protection plan. And it has a lot of different potential contaminating activities, agriculture and many other things, right? And there are ways to prevent that is to only use chemicals that won't contaminate presumably or, or to use them at certain application rates and things like that. So there are protection measures available. And so we would propose, of course, to, to follow all those. And it's a very, they're highly regulated industry and activity, requires multiple permits. There's federal laws, state laws. And those are, of course, designed to protect public health and the environment. And it is, it is, I guess, up to folks' own interpretation, whether or not you think those are adequate or not. But it is, it is a form of, of protection. And I always mentioned that a lot of leachate is generated. I want to make sure it's, it's clear that that leachate doesn't go into the ground. We collect all of it and we take it to a wastewater treatment plant and it's treated. That's, that's required, you know, by law. And that's true for all landfills. And so we, of course, follow all those procedures and there's monitoring systems and many things. So it's as, it's as safe as it can be. But I think with anything man-made, we cannot guarantee that under no circumstances would there not be, you know, something happen. Just like we can't rate guarantee that any bridge isn't going to fall down or any building's not going to fall down in a hurricane that was bigger than it was designed for or whatever. So we can just, we, we can follow the practices. We, we believe that they're adequate. And State Department of Health and EPA believes that they're adequate. And we, we can obtain permits to build landfills in the islands. That, that has to be the case. It has to be, there has to be a way for it to be formidable and safe. And there is.
After Michelle, did you, and okay, and then, then we have TJ waiting on standby too.
I think for myself and most of us, we have a hard time understanding that more pressure can't be put on military because it's Hawaiian land, not military.
Yeah, so I can't really, I really contribute much, you know, to that. I, I know that the, you know, in the succession of way things work, there's a city and then there's a state and then there's the federal. So the city can only pressure, do eminent domain with private property. We can't make the state sell us any land or give us any land. And same with federal, we have no, there, there's a hierarchy and there are two steps above us. And so they say no, it's no, same as with the state. So.
I just for you, Dr. Babcock. So leachate seems to be a human-generated issue, right? So we went from throwing all of our trash in, now we burn our trash and now we have this highly toxic chemical, leachate. Is that correct? Am I understanding the, how, what we're doing with our opala right now?
Yeah, so we'd have leachate, whether we burned it or not, it'd be basically the same stuff. And so, yeah, so leachate is formed, as Ernie mentioned, when rainfall hits the landfill and infiltrates through. So that is a issue when a landfill is in operation. During the entire time it's in operation, leachate is generated, it's pulled out and treated. As various sections of the landfill are closed, they're capped. So that's a, that's a law too. And so that prevents any new rainfall from coming in. So the closed sections of the landfill don't generate any leachate. Ultimately, when the whole landfill is closed, then it has to do the closure process in which it's sealed and then leachate generation ceases at that point.
How are we doing with the sealed areas? Are we monitoring leachate escaping? Has there been any evidence of that happening in other areas that are sealed?
Yeah, thanks. So no, that's a requirement. So actually, the rules require that we, that we monitor for 30 years. And the most recent landfills that were closed before Waimanalo Gulch were in Kailua, the Kapaa Quarry, the landfill and the Kalheo landfills. And we do monitor those. So operating landfills and closed landfills have monitoring wells all around them in the groundwater. And we have to monitor those and measure the contaminants. So we haven't found contaminants from the landfill at any of those, any of those sites. So again, Waimanalo Gulch has been in operation since 1989. The previous 35 years was in, was in Kailua before that.
Thank you. Thank you, and TJ, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ishikawa, for allowing this presentation tonight. Thank you, Mr. Babcock. Thank you, Mr. Lau. I still think you should be mayor. And I guess I just have some comments about what was said tonight. And you are right, Mr. Lau, kavaiola. And Chair Ishikawa, water is our life. And if we go back infinite, in, in infinite time, you will find that the mahaaina na, arkupuna, let's see, for lack of a better way to say it, our, our moku, namoku, auha, our genealogy, our family genealogies that come from this land, they lived, they farmed, they fed, they flourished on this land. And you're right, Chair Ishikawa, the number one thing that they did was take care of the water. Because as we have heard so many times, even with this Red Hill incident, clean water is our way of life. And And In the Paycom has not been contacted and they should. And I think in an earlier conversation, Mr. Babcock, you folks said that you would reach out to In the Paycom. And as of today, 4:45, they have not been contacted by anyone from the city regarding this landfill. We already know that we have to stay away from these no path zones. And it doesn't make sense to go back to the legislature or whatever body may be in session at that time that may seem to have the authority to change any acts because then that defeats the purpose of the process. And the process was to protect our land, to protect our very, very precious vi, our water, because without it, we don't live. So my comments are this, stay away from the no path zones. They are no path zones for a reason. And if there is ever a time that I'm sure BWS or anyone else in the authority decides that a particular piece of land is no longer qualified to be in that no path zone, they won't be there. That no path zone restriction will be removed. And we are in, we are in this land, this beautiful land that we have called home for thousands of years. You who have come, Mr. Babcock, you and other, other people who have not, whose roots are not here, you must be reminded and you will be reminded that you are in Hawaii nei. And this entire Hawaii nei is conservation area. Doesn't matter how you spell it, how you define it, who defines it, who protects it. Hawaii nei is conservation. So to, to waste all your energy and time and our resources, our, the people of this county, to waste your resources in trying to convince yourself and us that this landfill out here north of Waihau is where it's going to be, it's just that, a waste of resources. And I would ask that you go back and talk to your people and decide, wouldn't it be better to place those resources into ways or locating other sites for this landfill? Because if it takes us as the mahaaina na of this community to go to court to stop this, and if that means that we go up to the United States Supreme Court, who in our eyes have really no jurisdiction over our land, then we'll do that. And that will go beyond 2028. And that will go beyond the 30 years that's required of the monitoring for the landfills that are already closed. So don't waste our time, don't waste any more of our precious money. We're paying your salary. Don't waste any more of our precious water. Do the right thing and get out of Waihau with this landfill. Simple, easy. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Did you want to respond to that or? And if not?
I don't have any response, thanks.
Appreciate that. I think we have, we have a few minutes. If anybody from the community, any questions or comments, please come, if you can come forward. If you come here. No, but we need to, we need to have a microphone. Can, can, excuse me, can you please? Oh, sorry. Actually, you can use the, wait there, go to June and use his mics. And then Roger and Ernie can stay by that mic. Can you say your name to Yevensin? Hi Jenny, thank you.
Chair Ishikawa, excuse me, we cannot hear her.
I'm, I'm, yeah. Is the mic off? Can, can you hold it up? We can't hear you.
Still not on. You could, this, this one's working.
All right, okay.
Sorry, so the life cycle of the current landfill, you knew was coming to an end. But I've not heard anything about like waste reduction, any sort of recycling plans, any sort of, anything that's going to be future long term. Do you have anything like that in mind or a plan? And when do you plan on doing that?
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, it's a great question. Thank you for the question. So it has to do with recycling and essentially diversion of waste away from the landfill. So actually, only, less than 20% of the waste stream ends up in the landfill currently. About 82 to 84% diversion rate. So if you take the million tons of opala generated per year on the island, only less than 20% of that ends up, in terms of mass, ends up in the landfill. Partly that's because we reduced the, reduced the volume of the opala by 90% via H-power. But also, we have massive recycling programs. So as you know, green waste doesn't go there, we make compost out of that. The blue carts collect mixed recyclables. We have programs in addition to that where we recycle. Now, a brand new one is e-waste. Currently, if you look on the guidelines of, on the website, it says e-waste goes in the gray cart. That means it goes to H-power and it gets burned and becomes ash. Our new, new project with a new contract with a contractor is you can take those, take that to the convenience center. We're not going to pick it up from your house. But you take it to the convenience center, which there are seven of them, open seven days a week for 10 hours a day, every day of the year, except for Christmas and New Years. There's one here in Waihau. There'll be a place where you can put all e-waste, TVs, computers, cell phones, lithium ion batteries, everything can be recycled now there. And we also have a, we've contracted and it's in design and getting permits for an ash recycling project. So we'll be doing then what's done in Japan and some places on the East Coast where ash is processed, the bottom ash is processed and converted into a sand substitute product, which can be substituted up to about half of the sand requirement in asphalt. Other places also use it in concrete. We're not necessarily proposing that now, but the permits, we have permits in it. Department of Health, we're waiting for those to be issued. It's already been a couple of years. System has been designed, we have to construct it, that will take some time. That will reduce the amount of ash by 60%. So that contributes to less need for a landfill. Still got to have one, but it will either last a lot longer or whatever. So, so we have those programs as well as other, you know, other programs that are sort of, you know, in the works. One of them is food waste. Currently, food waste, all food waste goes into the gray cart. Beginning about a year from now, when the facility is constructed, contract's already been awarded to our composting facility, which is here, Hawaiian Earth Recycling, outside Waihau, that's where all the green waste goes. Soon, as soon as they build their new facility, which they just got their construction permits for, they're starting construction, we'll be able to put food waste. So it requires a new, a new type of operation. It's a new composting operation which is covered rather than open because of the food waste. So you don't want to attract birds and other things because there's food in there now. Currently, it's just green waste. So that's been delayed actually because of permitting. But construction did get started and we were supposed to have that open by April of this year, but it looks, it's going to be, right now we're projecting January. That is 25% of the waste stream in the gray cart is food waste. So that will be all diverted and made into compost. And the compost is a great recycled product, right? Otherwise, compost is imported, just like the sand. All sand used in Hawaiian construction is imported. Most of it comes from Canada. And sand is obviously very heavy. So this would be a local supply to offset some of the sand. So we feel very strongly about these things. Once the, once those things are in place, the diversion rate will be at least 90%. So from eight, going from 80% up to 90%. And in the waste management field, 90% is, is the highest standard in the world. If you look at Japan and, and some places in Europe and, and so even 84, even 84% is really high for the United States. So, so we're doing a lot with that, it's a really important part. We have what's called an integrated solid waste management plan. It outlines all that stuff and it's required, we have to have that, you know, for our permits. No, so it doesn't involve mining, you know, mining the landfill. That's, that theoretically can be done, but it's quite difficult because it isn't just one big bathtub full of stuff. There are cells and there are rocks and rock walls inside there that, to make it stable. And so it's not that easy to, to dig it up, for example, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Dr. Babcock, are you aware of anybody that's, that's working on a viable need for, for the leachate? Or portions of the leachate?
No, we're looking at further ways to treat, you know, the leachate. Right now, it goes to a wastewater treatment plant. And, but it can be, we could do some onsite treatment to reduce its volume more and then perhaps totally evaporated or something like that. There are some technologies like that, but they're quite a bit more expensive than what we do now. So that is a really emerging field. As Ernie mentioned, PFOS, a lot of it's related to PFOS because there's PFOS everywhere. There's, there's, most, most of our drinking water doesn't have PFOS, but all wastewater has PFOS because it's in your clothing, it's in food, it's in various kinds of products that we use, it's in our non-stick cookware. And so all wastewater has PFOS. And a lot of products that we use, that's why it's in leachate, right? It's in opala. That's the food containers and, and all kinds of different things have PFOS in them. And so PFOS is a big, is a big, is a big issue. But we have, we have, and we have restrictions, as Ernie mentioned, on drinking water. And there are some draft restrictions for wastewater and waste sludges currently in, in process by the EPA.
One more quick question, you're going to wrap it, go ahead.
Sorry, another about the opala. So I live on a street that doesn't have the three bins. So I just put it in one bin. Does that, is that just treated as a gray bin then?
That's correct. That's all going to H-power. So, so for folks that have manual, you're on a manual collection route, the, rather than automated with the side loader trucks, which by the way, was instituted in order to save money. Basically, an automated collection route has the same number of, has 1,000 carts, 1,000 homes. But you have one, one person on the crew and a manual crew has three. So it's one third, the, one third of labor and 100% less injuries because the driver never gets out of the truck. But, but regular sanitation workers have very high injury, injury rate. They're lifting stuff all the time and throwing it. But, so we have automated collection routes wherever we can. And so folks that are on an automated collection route, we encourage you to do your own recycling and separate green waste and take it to the convenience center or to one of the transfer stations or directly to Hawaiian Earth Recycling. They take everything directly, any green waste and it's free, of course. And all the convenience centers, of course, are free as well. And you can also recycle, any other recyclables also at the, at the convenience centers, so.
Yeah, one, last one, June, last one.
Hello.
Yep.
This is not exactly related to the landfill, but this related to the convenience centers. In the past, I don't know how it works now, but in the past, once the convenience center was full, it shuts down, no matter what time. I would advise that, that maybe the, the convenience center tries to stay open, bring in new bin, whatever, pay a little overtime to prevent people from dumping their big trash all along the road before they get to the convenience center. Because in Waihau, we have come on, come on a new road and every so often I see refrigerators out there, washers, mattresses, all the big stuff that they wanted to take to the convenience center. Something maybe stored on the side and then later on, put it into a bin that's changed out or something rather than closed down. Because especially after New Years, especially after Christmas, when everybody wants to bring their, their waste down there and then, and they find out that it's closed because the bins are full.
Yeah, thanks. So that is a, that's an ongoing challenge to, so when the, when the bins are full, then we, we have to, a driver has to go and bring a new bin, take, take the full bin and go to, go to H-power generally. Or if it's green waste, it goes up to HER. And so they do that, you know, all day as much as possible. Metal's bin is a contractor and so we rely on them. We also have a contractor for when we are short of trucks to, to help us change out loads. But the convenience centers always reopen as quickly as they can, as soon as they can get a, an empty, an empty bin. It could be that it has to wait long enough for that one bin to go all the way to H-power and then truck driver come back with it empty. It really just depends on, on the situations. But yeah, so we, we do our best to try and keep them open as, as much as possible. They do open 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM every day. But sometimes, you know, there, there is closures, unfortunately.
Okay, last question, I have TJ, our board member, and then we'll wrap you guys up. TJ?
Yes, thank you so much. I just wanted to ask actually, Mr. Babcock, since you were talking about, you know, you're speaking about our landfill and, and then you're also speaking about the community's ability to recycle and that we are recycling. Maybe if you or your office or someone within the city and county could host a community meeting where you talk about the different types of recycling that's available, like for the e-cars and some of the e-bikes and stuff like that. And provide, provide more opportunity for the community to learn about recycling our waste? And, and maybe that will take away some of the, lessen the need for our landfills. Because prior to contact in Hawaii, and I'm always going to go back to that because this is our Hawaii nei, where our ancestors, our kupuna were there. Prior to contact, we had ways of taking care of our waste. And everybody did it. And it was not just one entity or one particular family's koleana to take care of that waste. So I think while you may say that we need the landfill, you also talk about recycling. So I'm asking, what will it take for you or the city and county or whoever it may be to do something in the community and share recycling tips, ways to turn your, your vegetation into compost and things like that so that we can lessen the need for our landfills? Because I think that is a very important part of being sustainable. If we have a pandemic again, we're able to feed ourselves better and sustain ourselves better and longer than we did during the last pandemic. So I would ask that you do that for us, maybe, maybe just for Waihau because we are the pico and we are the center. So do that and, and share with us tips to recycle, to reduce waste so that we can reduce the ability or the need for a landfill.
Okay, thank you TJ. And just for everyone's edification, actually, I, I believe they still do it, is the Waihau Alliance Club would do a yearly collection. Either they would collect it up at Lillaw High School and sometimes down at the park. They've done, you know, a collection where you can bring computers or any kind of, you know, a collection and stuff. I believe it's the Alliance Club, I don't know if it's the, I know the Waihau Alliance Club did it. I'm thinking maybe the Middleani one, because Rin was in.
I think Rin organized the last one, but it wasn't the Lions Club.
Wasn't, okay, but Rin was, yeah, so I can contact Rin and, because that's something, you know, so she puts out posters, so, you know, as a community, besides, you know, what we're talking about, TJ, that I can reach out to Rin and ask if she's, what's her schedule on scheduling one of those and stuff? Because she does get a good turnout on those and then those go down to, to the waste center. So at this point, I just want to say thank you both for being here. You know, chief engineer and director, thank you. Because I know that you're getting the same questions or repeated questions, but it's because we just need information and we need understanding. But I think both of you have large, a large responsibility. And so we give you that credit and we, we thank you for the work that you're doing. But we just want to be kept in the loop. So I'll be in contact with Kathy for me, a few months down the road, we'll ask you to come back for an update. And I'll reach out to our, our city council and our, our government officials, you know, Donovan's office to see if there's anything we can do on that side too. So thank you both for being here. I know it's late, you guys got to drive home. But can, can we just give both men a round of applause? Thank you both. And thank you Kathy for being here. Thank you, everyone. We learn a little bit each time. So this is how we gotta move forward and work together, get more information, yeah. And as we move forward, you know, kalamai, but we, we all have to work together to figure out how we can do better. So thank you, but everyone, everyone for being here. Right now, we are on the agenda item of six for our elected officials. And may I call up Kevin from the mayor's office?
Hello, head chair. Kevin O'J, mayor's representative. I just want to say, you know, I have the pleasure of serving with both Roger and Ernie. And they're two of the brightest guys that we have in the city. And they do have, Chair, as you mentioned, just enormous responsibilities. So just a lot of respect for the, for the both gentlemen. Just a couple of quick updates, and I'm glad they were both here tonight. So I don't have to take any questions about the landfill again. The Palm Street and Kalani Avenue sidewalks, they were, they were painted on February 6th. Thanks for your photos. Those were really helpful.
And I already got compliments and I said, it's, it's the city, so thank you.
That's great. Glad we could show progress with that. The, there were a couple of other things. The repainting on the bike lanes near the American Savings Bank and 7-Eleven. I guess DFM was out there and has a crew performing that work on portions of the bike lane because there's some construction activity. And so we've got a note also to follow up with them. Once the construction's completed, that they go back, double back and, and address that. There was a question last week about the, an increase in ambulance vehicles. What are the current plans for increasing more ambulance vehicles and drivers? I guess there was an incident where it took 16 hours to transport a patient. And the response that we got was pretty extensive to that. I guess Waihaua General obviously became active last year. And it provides emergency room care. The center's not an inpatient facility. So if a patient needs to be hospitalized, they need to be transferred to another facility, another hospital. American Medical Response, AMR, is a private ambulance service on Oahu. And they do the interfacility transfers between hospitals. The city and counties, Emergency Medical Services EMS is the island's 911 emergency response provider. If American Medical Response was unable to do a transfer, then the 16-hour delay was not because of the city and county. Our response times are typically under 20 minutes, even for interfacility transfers. As 911 EMS calls continue to arise, they do anticipate adding additional EMTs and paramedics as well as ambulance units across Oahu. Hopefully, that's an adequate response. And then real quickly, we were asked to follow up on, on Warren's permits. And I understand he's working with the DPP and the Department of Health to get those permits in place. It's our understanding he has them. And we're going to follow up with Warren to make sure he's got copies of those so he can, he can post as required.
Thank you. And I saw Warren, I saw you there today when I drove by. The, the refreshed truck was there, right? Yeah. Any other, any questions from board members for mayor's office? Nope. Okay, thank you Kevin. And.
Madam Chair.
I apologize, there's a hand up. Oh, Dean, hi Dean.
Aloha, board members. Sorry, I got in late. Sir, I was, you brought it up, DPP. Recently, there was a, a story about a local business, family-owned business that's been flipping homes and avoiding getting the proper permits. You know, these, there's also been a personal contact with another flipper. And I find that these guys are just paying the fines, the small fines because it's easier for them to avoid getting the long waiting, long time to get the permits. Why doesn't the city start charging higher fines for these habitual companies or these people who are flipping homes, making hundreds of thousands of dollars, as they really are? And, you know, hit them where it hurts, in the pocketbook. You know, these, these minimum fines that they have at DPP are not hurting them. I think, you know, once after the third time, it should go up to like $25,000, $50,000. You know, hit them where it hurts. Can you, we check on that and see?
Actually, I can respond to that. The Department of Planning Permittee is actually considering that and it's actively being discussed and pursued internally. And then obviously the follow-up in addition to the fines is, is actually going after the violators.
Right. Thank you. Okay, great. Well, I hope it comes through and let me know if you need support in the council.
Thank you Kevin. Any, but anyone else question? Okay, so if you don't mind, Kevin, if you, as a representative of the city, if you don't mind, I'd like, everyone, if you don't mind, if we can, if I can call for a moment of silence because one of the city's paramedics, Landon. I, I used to work with him, but he is a paramedic, but he passed away recently. And he was one of the city's ambulance paramedics. So if we can do a quick moment of silence, if you don't mind. Thank you. On behalf of Landon Toshi, for a great service that he did to so many and helped so many, you know, people in the city and county of Honolulu. Mahalo, thank you.
Thanks very much for that, Chair.
Coming up next, can I call councilmember Meyer's office, Kelly?
Aloha Chair and members of the board, Kelly Anaya from councilmember Matt Wyer's office. Couple of stuff I wanted to highlight. Councilmember was super thrilled to participate in the Lelihua Alumni and Community Association Centenarian Luncheon a few weeks ago. Couple other things. With the 2026 fiscal year budget coming around, he wanted everyone to know that we are closely monitoring the potential federal funding changes and is working closely with the city administration to assure budget resiliency. Also wanted to give a shout out to Chair Ishikawa for last month's request regarding the crosswalk at Kialani and Palm. So I'm sure you've already seen, but the DFM crew did go through, not just through Kialani, but through a lot of the city streets.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I waved to them and said, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure. Thank you for your patience. And then also, I'm sure you already seen, but the Whitmore Gym roof renovations are underway. And then, see, oh.
Do you have an estimated timeline for the gym?
No, I don't, but I can, I can see if I can get.
Okay, thank you. Oh, six, six months? Oh terrific. Oh, great.
Thank you. Yeah, right? And then right out here, illegal dumping, keep happening. So, yeah, gently remind our neighbors to please not dump your illegal bulky trash items because the Parks Department is the one that has to take care of that, so.
Yeah, and just for clarification, I did get, I was gonna call tomorrow, I got a call on that too. So that area is actually supposed to be for, for here, this back here to use. Because they do have senior activities, you know, during the daytime and all that. So they take their lunch trash or what. But like you said, other people are dropping off, you know, bags that obviously are coming from their homes or whatnot. So it's getting overflow, overflowing with trash. Cats are ripping through it, so everything's, and it's just kind of a mess. So I was, yeah, we'll, we'll try and see what we can figure.
And I did confirm with Parks employee that the furniture that's out there is not anything that's being discarded by the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Parks Department, rather, I should say.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. And then also the Waihaua pool heater, we're getting closer and closer. We are actually, the contractor is ready to begin as soon as the department finalizes, the Parks Department finalizes the necessary paperwork and issues the notice to proceed. So fingers crossed on that. And then a couple legislative updates. Bill 15 would establish a cesspool conversion grant program to help lessen the financial hardships faced by our local families. This is on the agenda for council coming this Wednesday. Also, Bill 18, which would help restrict the sale of single-use plastic bottles at vending machines at city facilities. This is also on the agenda for February 26th full council. And Bill 61, the wheelies bill is back on and it would help to assist HPD with enforcement by prohibiting motorized vehicles from doing wheelies on public streets. This is also on the agenda for February 26th full council. Also, speaking of landfills, Resolution 25003, we are affirming the existing city council policy that solid waste landfills should not be located above drinking waters was unanimously adopted in January. Councilmember also wanted to highlight some of the stateside bills. House Bill 969, which would prohibit construction modification or expansion of landfills near or above an aquifer. Likewise, Senate Bill 438, which would prevent any landfills from being sited over aquifers or prime ag land. Getting back to some of the people that were asking about recycling, councilmember will be holding a, it's more geared towards the Kauai Loa green waste. And I want to thank Director Babcock for agreeing to attend along with two other ENV officials. It's going to be next week, Monday, from March 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Waileua Elementary Cafeteria. Basically, the issue that we're having is Kauai Loa is not accepting green waste. So I know the community is quite upset about that. So we're going to be holding a meeting to discuss why and what the situation is. It should be taken to Hawaiian Earth Recycling for composting and recycling. And somebody also mentioned about, I guess, like your electronics or whatever. I just so happens to have those dates from Ms. Mancho. So those going green dates, Waihaua Hongkanji is going to be July, I'm sorry, July 5th. Lelihua High School is going to be September 27th. And then Waihaua Middle is going to be November 15th.
Thank you. So I wasn't going crazy. I know she probably plans these.
Yeah, we, we actually had an inquiry, so just so happens it.
So can I just repeat with you, July 5th? Is that on Waihaua Hongkanji? And the 27th of September is at Lelihua High School?
Yes.
And then the November date is?
November 15th at Waihaua Middle.
At Middle School. Okay, terrific. So you guys got that too, right? Yeah, right on too. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Um, I know that she has other dates, but those are the ones, somebody in the community was asking specifically for Waihaua dates. So that's why I only have those. But I know she has them throughout the island.
Okay, yeah, she does, yeah. Good teamwork, I love it.
And that's all for me. If anyone has any questions for councilmember, I can take them back.
Any questions on board? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for being here. A question about the cesspools. I know it's a big burden of an expense for people, especially on the North Shore, but it does cause a lot of issues with our clean ocean water. Are families or homes or businesses that haven't converted cesspools, are there fines? Or is it just they get an EPA letter saying you need to do this within this amount of time?
I, I don't.
Okay, if you could find out. That's so specific. I just was wondering. Okay.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Virtual, Dean?
Hi Kelly, how are you? Thank you for working on my call-ins to you over the past month.
Sure, no problem, no.
Like I just mentioned to the mayor's rep, if the councilmember could work with the administration on getting these higher fines passed for habitual violators. You know, for years and years, since the home flipping houses has become a real popular business, you know, the fines are very minimal. I've understood it only to be a hundred dollars up to a thousand dollars, you know? And they're making hundreds of thousands of dollars on their sales. So I mean, it will not hurt them at all if we increase those fines. So I appreciate that, if that can be, if you possibly keep on top of that. That's all. Thank you so much. Mahalo.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions for Kelly? Anybody for councilmember? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, and we're gonna, is Rosemary, I don't, I don't see Rosemary, is Rosemary? From governor's office? Okay, I don't think governor's office is here today. Senator De La Cruz's office?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Malakai.
Hi, as a going chair, members of the board, members of the public. Malakai Burrows, reporting for Senator De La Cruz. So starting off, I had gotten a question. I think it was just a general question about the plans or details for the freshwater park project. So just a little background and update. So the project is titled Waihaua Freshwater State Recreation Area. I think that's what was being referred to. So there's a few phases. Phase one of the project, and it hasn't, you know, it's not underway yet. Phase one would include plans, design and construction of additional parking, sheltered picnic tables, trailer restroom. And then it would also include like community outreach and conceptual planning and environmental assessment. And I think the environmental assessment is underway and I can get an update on that from DLNR, maybe for the next meeting. Then phase two would be plans and design for the expansion of a comfort station, amphitheater, walking paths and additional parking. And then phase three, which is a bit kind of out, in the out years, would include a multi-divisional facility. So different divisions within DLNR, not exactly sure which divisions. But that's kind of in the out years. And there is funding, the Department of DLNR did request funding for the next two fiscal years. And most of that funding, actually all that funding was not included in the governor's budget. So we'll see what happens this session, which was getting funds for those different phases of the project. And then just wanted to touch on the landfill topic. Last time, I had reported that Senator had introduced some bills, both in terms of protecting the land or protecting the land from the landfill and preserving it for agriculture use. So all three of the bills either passed the first committee or passed both committees on the senate side. So Senate Bill 448, this is the one that would allow the state to purchase a conservation easement from Dole. So that would basically ensure that those ag lands in that area could be purchased essentially through an easement from Dole, who currently owns the land where the landfill would go. And that would preserve agriculture. So that passed both the front end and the back end committees on the senate side. And next it'll go to the floor for a full senate vote. Senate Bill 438 would prevent any landfills being sited over aquifers. Would also ensure that landfills can't be placed on lands classified as Ag 1 or Ag 2 in a tiered system for classifying ag lands by the state. This one passed the front end and the Ways and Means Committee is going to hear it on the 26th, so a couple days from now. The last bill, 446, Senate Bill 446, would require counties to include no pass zones in their integrated solid waste management plans. Again, to prevent landfills being placed on freshwater resources. That passed both front end and back end committees and it'll be headed to the floor for a full senate vote. And then one other bill, not landfill related, but something that I know the community has voiced concern about relating to e-bikes, electrical bikes. This is Senate Bill 1117, 1117, relating to transportation. Just a few notes, because the bill covers quite a bit of information on e-bikes, motorbikes. And it's kind of extensive, but just a few things I wanted to note that people might find interesting. Firstly, it would prohibit persons under the age of 15 from riding certain e-bikes. Primarily the fast ones. Also raises the age requirement for helmets from 16 to 18. And then it also includes electric motorcycles. So those are the ones, you know, with like a motor and they're a bit fast. So those are the ones, you know, with like a motor and they're a bit faster than normal e-bikes. It included those in the state's insurance laws, the same ones that govern motorcycles and motor scooters. Lastly, just a reminder that the Value Added Product Development Center on California Ave, the new one just opened last spring, does educational programs. So coming up in March, they have a couple. One is about market entry strategies. So it's kind of like a business geared learning opportunity on March nineteenth. And then the other one has to do with a little bit about crops. And this is the Maya crop, which is like a banana crop. And it's a workshop on the twenty-first of March. So you can find a lot, a lot more about the educational programs at Value Added Center on their website. Just Wahiwa Value Added Product Development Center through Leeward College. And you can learn about the different opportunities and workshops they put out there. That's about it. If there's any questions, I can try and answer.
Thank you, Malakai. Questions? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Malakai. I believe last time I asked about if there could be a follow-up on the palm trees, the Royal Palms on Palm Drive, because they are not looking healthy.
Yeah, I can get back to you on that. I don't know if I put that in my notes, but I do think I remember you asking about that. So I know DOA has treated them in the past. And I think I just have to double check with them about what their schedule is. Because I think they have a schedule where they treat them, but it's got to see, you know, when the next time they're scheduled to treat them.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Malakai, you mentioned environmental impact statement for the freshwater park. Will that be presented to the board here?
I can, I can present it if it's completed and whatever the findings are. Whatever I can get from DLNR, I can bring that back next month. I don't know if they are planning their separate, you know, presentation.
They should.
I will gather what I can and bring that back.
Yeah. Malakai, actually, I don't mind if you follow up on Joe's thing, because I sat on that committee. So they, I know that they were putting together like a, you know, like a presentation booklet. And that was like last year though. So they might still have it or they might still be working on it. I don't know if it's completed or not, but we definitely would like to have that opportunity and have a presentation from them, if you could relay that.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, board? Oh, Dean, go ahead, Dean.
Aloha, Malakai. Thank you for coming. My question actually is surrounding the freshwater park improvements. And on the EIS, will that include a traffic study? You know, Walker Avenue narrows very, comes down from a two-lane toll, basically a one-lane entrance into the park. And is there consideration to make at the back end an exit? You know, one way in, one way out, that will go, I believe it comes down on Mulley Way. But can you see, find out what the traffic is going to be detailing because, or detailing? Because you folks, the state might have to consider doing a traffic light system similar to like what they do up at Diamond Head. The traffic alternates, you know, the traffic light alternates traffic going in and out of the crater. Because right there at that, only one vehicle can fit through that gate at a time. And we already have handy vans that go to the back for the development center, the rubbish trucks that come in to pick up the rubbish, both private and the state. So yeah, you can make sure that they do have a traffic study done. Because I think that what they might need to consider is also restricting park, restricting parking to one side of the street only. You know, sometimes we go down to the freshwater park, you know, it's like a little zigzag, you know? Guys park on the left side, then you guys park on the right side. So if you could follow up on that, make sure they do something regarding traffic awareness.
Yep, yep. I will check with them on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions for Senator's office? Okay, thank you very much, Malakai.
Thank you.
Moving on to Representative Pruso's office.
Aloha, I'm right here.
Thank you.
Hi. So I want to kind of piggyback on the whole discussion about the landfill issue. So to provide an update from the House, House Bill nine six nine, which would prohibit the sighting of a landfill over an aquifer, is moving to the Judiciary Committee, which I sit on. And I anticipate that it will move over to the Senate, move across to the Senate. Furthermore, I, I heard Board Member Mendelson's question about waste management. And, you know, the counties all have integrated waste management plans. And one of my bills, House Bill seven five one, requires them to develop more aggressive and substantive goals around solid waste diversion, in particular food waste. So that also is being heard by finance tomorrow. And I also anticipate that moving over to the Senate. And the final bill that I wanted to mention with respect to, you know, these conversations has to do with what's called extended producer responsibility. And so what that is, is basically creating a system where we hold the producers of all of these plastics and all of this waste material financially responsible so that they change their manufacturing methods and, and materials. So that has been successful in other jurisdictions. And we are really just asking our counties, because they are responsible for waste management, to kind of bring their activities in line with other jurisdictions around the nation and around the world. Because we are, you know, a paiaina, we are a set of islands. And we don't have a lot of alternatives with respect to waste disposal. So burning, if you talk to the Department of Health about whether they consider H-power diversion of waste materials, they do not. They do not consider burning to be recycling. So I think that there's, in some ways, misrepresentation of existing activities. And it's also really important for all of us to understand that even when we take, you know, our, our e-waste to be recycled, there, we don't have robust facilities on island to do any of this recycling. And so this is really what we are asking the counties to do, is to develop those facilities and to support them. So I'm sharing that because this is such an important conversation, not just for our community, but also for this whole island, because our water source is being threatened. And, and when we do have to make hard choices, we can make choices to act differently and create different kinds of infrastructure. And at least in the House, we are trying to move in that direction. So, and then kind of switching tracks, I wanted to also mention that the, I had an opportunity to talk to the Rainbow Seniors this morning. And I guess that's how we'll frame this, this conversation. And normally I talk to the Rainbow Seniors maybe for twenty or thirty minutes. And this morning, they kept me for an hour and a half. Because they wanted to talk about what's happening at the federal level. And I was eager to have that conversation, because it's also been dominating my thoughts. And I, I had my husband, John, leave some of my newsletters at the District Park so that it could be distributed or people can pick them up if they'd like to read them. But essentially, I am eager to have our state and local governments start talking about what we need to do to protect our vulnerable communities. And we understand, given the budget proposal in the, in the US House, that critical funds for, for our community in particular will be cut, right? They're already going after Medicaid, Department of Education funding, all kinds of other sources of funding in order to fund billionaire tax cuts. So I, I, I want to be really clear about my position on the role that I think that the state should play in backfilling and making sure that our most vulnerable are taken care of. Because if we look around, just around Oahu, our community is going to be impacted much more intensely than some other communities, you know, like Huai Kai or Aina Haina are not as vulnerable as we are. We have people living in public housing dependent on Section Eight vouchers. We have so many people dependent on Medicaid. And, and Medicaid is what is really keeping Wahiwa Health together. We, we have the, the implications of what's happening at the federal level are so pervasive and so severe that is really critical that leaders at the neighborhood board level also start talking about this. Because we're going to have to start identifying ways in which we need to help each other. And, and the ways in which the local government, so I'm talking about the counties, and ways in which the state needs to kind of pick up the slack when those sources of funding are cut. So those are the things I wanted to share tonight, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Representative. And I actually got a phone call from one of the Rainbow Seniors. So it was a long conversation, so we can probably offline. We can share, share their concerns and our concerns as a community as well. So thank you very much for updating us. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, Rep. Pruso. Thank you. Lots of food for thought. Thank you for having those brave conversations and just bringing up topics that sort of are on people's minds that maybe are hesitant to share them in local conversations. I want to go back to the first topic that you talked about, this idea of the extended producer responsibility. And maybe just this idea that as a consumer, I can only go do so much. Like I go to Walmart and everything I buy has to be in a plastic container. So what is the onus of these companies to, you know, create that circular economy? So are there any bills to be supported right now that are sort of putting that onus on corporate organizations?
Yes. So I am looking for the bill number right now, but it is essentially a bill that was introduced by our Environmental Caucus. And it, it is specifically about EPR. And that bill is going to be heard by finance. And I, I anticipate that it will move through to the Senate. And I'll post the, I'm looking for the bill number right now. I'm sorry, I spaced on it. But I will find it.
Okay, thank you. Any, go ahead, Michelle.
Hi. Thank you for having the conversation with the seniors. But I hope you also stated how important it is for a balanced budget and how much pain and so forth, that this isn't just random. You know, I mean, it's, it's a necessary thing to cut back on certain areas.
I am definitely what I would consider to be a proponent of fiscal responsibility. And I think that the first thing that I think about, when I think about fiscal responsibility is that we, what's happening around the cuts that are being made are going after Medicaid is, is some part of our budget. But if we simply collected the taxes that are owed at the federal level, that is one trillion dollars that are owed. If we looked more seriously at the bloated Department of Defense budget, I think these are all parts of the conversation that really, like if we're going to have an open conversation, I think we need to lay everything open. And I, you know, just based on the principle of fairness, I don't feel comfortable with the most vulnerable, the weakest, paying, carrying the heaviest burden. So for me, that's kind of like, you know, my line in the sand.
I see Dean, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Rep. How are you?
Hi. Sorry, I'm off IC tonight.
Cool, good. Thank you for your comments regarding the federal administration and what they're doing. And I'm glad you're there, you know, bucking the system. My, my thing is, is that my cousin is a federal employee who is, received one of those emails. He is a wildlife enforcement officer. And, you know, Hawaii is blessed to have the natural resources that we have. And I recall maybe about a week ago, the governor saying something about possibly hiring these federal employees.
Yes.
Can you elaborate or touch on what you know about that?
That's actually a positive kind of win-win situation. You know, we, I always talk about how we're so plagued with vacancies. And it looks like, so the governor has set up a system called We Hire or Gov Hire, or something like that, where we are expediting the hiring of the federal employees who have been laid off. And it's not just that people are getting letters like, you know, the, the, what was it, the fork in the road letter. Now people are getting pink slips and getting fired. So to, and, and we have, you know, needs not only across the state departments and agencies, but also at the county levels. So I am really hopeful actually that we will benefit from, in some silver lining, small silver lining way, from what's, I would say the implosion of federal government. But I also think that, I recognize that the pay and the benefits are not equivalent. So that those workers are still going to be suffering. And it, it's not like the best scenario. But I, I do think it's, it's kind of like one of the things I think that state government should be doing.
I agree with you. You know, it is a paycheck and that's what's important, you know, especially out here, you know? So well, thank you for that, for an update. So I could just go to the state personnel office or?
Yeah, there's actually, and we'll post the, Ivan's on, and she, she will post a link to, there's a special expedited contact.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Representative? Okay. Oh, yes, go ahead. Yeah. Standby, Representative.
Okay, standing by.
Representative Pruso's point, the city and the county and the state are cosponsoring a job fair for displaced federal employees at the Blaisdell on April eleventh and twelfth. It was just announced. I don't even know if it's been announced yet. We're working on it.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Oh, that's terrific. Joint, joint project. Terrific, city and state. Okay, everyone, pass the word, April eleventh and twelfth, I'm sorry, at the Blaisdell? Blaisdell.
Mahalo.
What? Oh, correction, Hawaii Convention Center, April eleventh and twelfth, Hawaii Convention Center. Thank you.
Perfect. We'll also share that.
Thank you. Yeah, this is great information to help people. Okay, anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Sorry, I was so cranky.
No, you're good. We, all good information. We help each other. Moving on to item seven on our board business. And my friends, we are coming close because it's nine thirty, so let's see if we can get through this really quickly. Approval of Minutes, regular meeting on Monday, January twenty-seventh. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five minutes are approved. Chairs report and board actions called for disclosures. The only disclosure I can make for myself, I would just say is I did receive a concern from a senior regarding what is going on with Medicare and other things that are coming from Washington DC, from the state, our, our capital. Anyone else? Any engagements with the public? Oh, wait, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Mike, Mike?
Some of us were at the Jill Takutu's town hall last week, so.
Okay, who else went? Just you, June and Joe and Kate got it. Kate got it. Yeah, I got you. Yeah. All three. Okay, so that Takutu is Joe, June and Michelle. Okay. Oh, yeah, 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 we did that. Yeah, okay. Correspondence, we read the correspondence that came regarding Lelihua High School and the safe, the traffic safety project. I'll do a follow-up call on that tomorrow. Committee reports, education, Sylvia, Lelihua graduation. Okay, we were, okay. Okay, it will, okay, very good. Military, we had our report on that. Transportation, Ampo, Joe? Oh, microphone.
There's a revision to the current tip that is out for community response or question from today through March 10th.
What's the, what's the question?
Do we want to approve the tip, the revised tip?
Transportation program. But what is revised, the?
There's a, there's a, I don't have the number, but there's a lot of revisions.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is a four-year program
Yes.
of funding for different projects. Each year, twice a year, actually, they go through and they revise. This is, this is the December revision.
What would be a highlight? It's, sorry, like what would be, like for you, because you know well, so what would be a good?
Actually, nothing up here in Wauhaua.
Oh, all right.
Port O'Lealani. It's mostly down by the airport and Pearl Harbor area, and Andrews Drive, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Minor, minor revisions, actually.
Okay.
The, the public input is open now through March 10.
March 10, yeah.
And anyone who wants to comment can go to oahuampo.org.
Okay, that's Oahu M, as in Michael, P as in Peter.
Michael Paul, Oscar.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Then next one is water. We had that today. And Hawaiian Affairs, Dean, any report?
The annual Lady Queen's election will be occurring on, in March. So it's open to the public. Come on down and meet the contestants, and hopefully there'll be a family member that is running for the Lady Queen and princesses. Also, on a personal note, Madam Chair, that humming sound you made here in the back is, I'm now attached to a oxygen infiltrator as I suffered five times with COVID. It damaged my lungs. So that's why I was out last month. So I now have a new friend with me. So I may not be at the meetings, but I'll be attending virtually.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dean, please take care. You're very important to us, so please take care.
Thank you.
Okay, gather myself, sorry. Okay. And, and Dean, the other thing I guess I was going to ask you is, where will this year's Lady, is it going to be at Kapolehale, or is it at the, at the Kapolelani Park, or?
It's gonna, okay, from what I understand, it is going back to Kapolehale. But they can check at City and County Parks and Recreation, and then they'll just look for the link for Lady Queen selection.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, everyone, closing statement. The next Wauhaua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board meeting is on Monday, March 17th, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM, here at the Holico building, Wauhaua District Park. And having said that, last chance, anyone? Okay, we're adjourned. Mahalo. Thank you, Dean. Take care.
Aloha.